All right, we can call this meeting to order.
Good.
We will start with our invocation from Pastor Steve Cruz.
Let us pray. Our kind gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this day you've given us. We come before your presence with thanksgiving. We thank you for all of our first responders in Hamlet and all of those that look out for us, and we pray your blessing upon them and that you keep them all safe. We pray now for our city council and our electric officials as they come now to do business for the city. We ask you to give them wisdom and knowledge and understanding. Keep them all safe. Watch over this wonderful place, Hamlet, that we call home. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, adoption of agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Item number four, approval of consent agenda.
I have a, I have a comment on that. There was some discussion about the tax rate in our last meeting, and there was some discussion about where it is now, where it could go later. I made a motion that we reduce it to seventy cents per one hundred. But that wasn't in the meeting, in the minutes. That wasn't in the minutes of the meeting, so I wanted to include that just, just for clarity, I guess.
Okay, okay, with that amendment, do we have a vote to accept the consent agenda?
Yes, second.
So Evy's.
With the amendment.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, I think we have at least one comment from attendee tonight, Denise Kozart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Denise Kozart, and I'm here on behalf of Dock Hills Family Care Home that's located at 302 Spring Street. And on behalf of Dock Hills Family Care Home, I want to express our sincere gratitude for your attendance, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Stewart, to our open house event that you attended on April twentieth. We understand that it was an exceptionally busy day, that day in our county, which makes your presence all the more meaningful. By taking the time and your hectic schedule to join us, you demonstrate a true dedication to engaging with the community and supporting our local organizations like ours. Your willingness to connect directly and to learn what we were doing is invaluable. Thank you for your leadership and service to our city. We appreciate your continued efforts to building strong connections between our government and the people you represent. Your support means a great deal to us. We also had the presence of Mayor Blue and Councilwoman David that attended, so we appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule. But also, I would like to give a bit of thanks to a few other departments, if you will bid me the time. The fire department, I called the fire department right before Thanksgiving last year, and we are not only trying to beautify our property on 302, we're trying to expand and the street be beautified. I called the chief, and he said, "I'm gonna be honest with you. We're going into Thanksgiving and we're going to Christmas. I will not be able to paint your fire hydrants on High Street and Kent Street until after the first of the year." And he, true to form, he kept his word, and they just showed up one day, and they were painted. So we appreciate when we ask for things that they could be done, and he gave an honest estimate, didn't give me a false sense of, that I have to keep trying to run you down. Also, with the sanitation department for the city, if you know who Shannon is, please give her some kudos. We've called her, I personally have called her many times, trying to get different things done. I missed a truck, it's going down the road, can you swing them back around? What do I do about this, that, and the other? And she has just made it happen. She gave me true expectations, not something I had to keep reminding and running her down. She has really helped us out there. And even the biggest problem that I had was the pothole. We got the sidewalks fixed, but there was a gap between the street and the sidewalk, and she handled it for us. She said, "I'll get somebody out." There was a gentleman out there that same day to assess what was going on, and I was sitting on the porch at Dock Hills when they came out to fix it, and he said, "Shannon told me to make it look pretty now. Is this okay?" So, and it is okay. So now, we don't have to worry about our tenants not only falling in the road due to the bump for that reason. Also, the police department, the police department has been a great asset to us. That is, has become over the years a problematic area. So they have popped up and are residing behind that one-way stop sign. And it is slowing traffic down, it's moving some of our elements out. So our police department, if you would, I don't see them here unless they walked in behind me, but give them those kudos, we certainly do appreciate that. But with that being said, I do have some requests. Spring Street, as you know, it has become a thoroughfare. It is a, it is a speedway right now. We've got more and more cars parking on both sides of the road. We would like for the police department to extend their help between seven and ten a.m. to slow that traffic down and actually stop the eighteen-wheelers from coming down. We still have wires that are going across the streets, that it's not a matter of if, it's when, they're gonna tear them down. So if they could start giving out some warning tickets to these truck drivers to stop coming through Spring Street to go on the seventy-four, would be great. The hours that they seem to be piling down this road at about forty miles an hour is between seven a.m. and ten a.m. I also, on that same token, would like to ask that you slow down the traffic. Currently, the speed limit, let me back up just a minute, there is a no-through truck sign that the truck drivers are avoiding on that road.
What is that speed limit?
The speed limit currently is thirty-five. I want to ask to slow that traffic down to more of a speed limit of twenty miles an hour. So whatever steps we need to do to make that happen, because we can't have speed bumps, because in speaking with the city manager, there's insurance liabilities that go with that. We can't paint the roads, because the city doesn't paint the stripes in the middle of the road to slow those down either. So if you would consider that, see what we need to do to drop that. The other thing that I would like to ask you for, may I approach?
Why are you handing those out? Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
When those trucks.
Does that make a difference?
Huh? I heard that. Those trucks that come through, are they pulling trailers?
Yes.
Are they big trailers?
They're box trucks, they're flatbeds, and they're reefer trucks.
Why?
I'm sorry. And also, you now have the dumpster truck by Tetter. He's pulling his up that way as well.
I have seen them, and there's a lot of times they want to come up there and use Hamlet Avenue, too.
What's a reefer truck?
And it's a problem.
A reefer truck is another, is a refrigerated box truck. It's still.
That's what the reefer's saying.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
You were going there, were you?
Well, I kept thinking, what, what are you talking about?
And you said that out loud, too.
Oh, yeah, I did.
But those trucks coming down the road are average, the average truck size is twenty-six thousand pounds, and that's without a load on their back. Okay, so that's why we're asking that, you know, at least give out some warning tickets. So it will deter them from coming down that way. So what you're looking at here is we're asking for a road blockage, to block off the road. Some of you might not, can remember what Spring Street looks like. August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, from nine a.m. to nine p.m., it's gonna be Dock Hills' first annual community cookout, back-to-school supply. And if we're blocking off on Spring Street, the top side of Spring Street and the bottom side is our driveway, is where you see those road closures. It's not gonna impede on anybody's house, residents, from getting into their homes at all, because that is the only person that would be inconvenienced, if you will, would be Dock Hills. Because across the street from our driveway is that, my picture of the burnt-down house. And then where you see the blocks where, you know, then this is just tentative, how we're going to kind of put things for the block party, where you've got where we want a police car, cornhole, that is the two lots that's across the street next, and there's nothing there. So that will be cleared off to where we can have some other things. What we're gonna use the middle of the street for, as you see, are gonna be tables where people could sit down and enjoy their meal and congregate. The serving area, because we'll have a separate serving area to serve the food, people will go sit down, and the grill, it's the best picture I could come up with, with a big grill to put in there. But that will be in the middle of High Street, so we're asking for those roads or consideration for those roads to be closed off. We have already contacted all of the people that is surrounding us for noise or any problems. Do they disagree, and they're wanting, they're excited about it, and they're, they plan to attend themselves. We say nine a.m. to nine p.m. It will probably be over at six, but we wanna have time to clean up, make sure the road's clear, get trash to the corner, so that Ms. Shannon could help us out with a special pickup. Questions?
No questions?
The closing is High Street, right?
Well, it's, yes, it's not Spring Street.
One block. Okay.
Correct, a corner. Now, well, see, that was the first thing that we were gonna do, we were gonna, I was thinking of Spring Street, but then you have to get all this other stuff from everybody that lives on both sides of the street, and then they're not gonna be able to get to, get to their driveways or get into their door. So the part that we're asking is on High Street, from Spring Street to our driveway, which is not impeding anybody's ability to get home.
Anybody else is, they'll just have to go around.
They, correct, correct.
I'm familiar with the layout, and I think, and it'd be, if I can say this, it'll be just one day only, right?
That is correct.
And I'm familiar with the area, and on it, it's very, it wouldn't hurt anything.
Fantastic, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Yes.
So Matt, is there paperwork she would need to fill out, or what is the process?
So there is a policy for special events. There's a simple application that you can submit. You've already done most of the work here, so I'd be happy to send you that application, and you can fill it out. There's a committee that reviews it. It's a committee of myself, police, fire, public works, you know, all the folks involved, bring everybody to the table, make sure that we can facilitate the event, make sure if there's any questions, answers, you know, that all that stuff gets ironed out beforehand. But all, all things considered, it's a fairly straightforward process. We'd be happy to assist you with.
Fantastic, and we are asking for a police car, police presence out there, as well as a fire truck, because maybe they'll turn on those newly painted fire hydrants, turn it on for the kids for a little bit, and EMS to be out there as well.
And when you want the police car and the, and the truck there, you'd like to have an employee there with them, to stay with them.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
I just want to make that sure, put that in there.
Yes, because I'm sure there'll be some kids that might want to look at us.
That's correct.
Look in the car and, and see all the bells and whistles. It's better to see them on the right side opposed to putting them in the back.
And it's, and they explain to them what goes on. It's exciting, and I'm excited about this.
Thank you, thank you.
One last thing, Matt. We're within that timeframe. I know there's a timeframe to apply for that. Street closings and stuff, we're still within that, right?
We, we can work. We have worked with applicants, because I think the, the timeframe's pretty strict. I think it's ninety days. This is, I think frankly, more notice than we typically get sometimes. So we're happy that you're here talking about it in, in May. Yeah, and usually we, it's a struggle to kind of get some clarity like this, so you're well ahead of the curve. We'd be happy to work with you.
Fantastic. And I'll make sure you have the email address. If you could send that over as soon as you can, we'll get it submitted.
Yeah.
Are there any fees that go along with that application? Permits or anything we need to?
I don't think so, but I'll have to get back with you on that. I'll have to review the policy. But I do have your phone number. I know we spoke on the phone recently, you mentioned. But if you wouldn't mind maybe like writing on the sign and shoot your email, thank you.
Not a problem, thank you.
I just want to say, Ms. Kozart and the Dock Hills team, thank you for bringing your business to Hamlet. This is some new flavor that we need in Hamlet. Love to veterans and all that you're doing, minority-owned businesses. We want more and more of it, so thank you so much.
And Mayor Gwen, I must say, when you came out and you were meeting some of the, the visitors that were there, you met with my uncle, Roscoe, and he says, "That's not the mayor. He's ninety-four years old, keep in mind." But he knew where he knew Ms. Gwen from.
Yeah.
And that was from your insurance days.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, thank you for your outreach.
That's where I know him from, know her from. So that's why I appreciate you and Councilwoman Stewart, Mayor Blue, and Councilwoman David, just coming out and partaking in, in those type of interactions, especially from the government to come in and sit down and speak with them and take time is very appreciative. So I appreciate y'all taking time out of your day.
It's a great outreach, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for me?
I think you brought all the information to the table, and that's all the questions.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, item number six. I'm gonna open the floor for a public hearing. Any comments about the annual budget? So no comments?
The public hearing would be the time for the, the public to make comments. I'm happy to speak generally to the budget, if you would like.
Sure.
Yeah, sure. So just a quick overview of the budget. The budget presented is balanced. It was presented earlier this month, following work sessions in February, March, and April. It does include a four percent cost of living adjustment for the staff. It also includes various capital improvements and equipment for the staff to provide the highest quality service to our residents and customers. I'll note that we did make some decisions in our work session to offset some of the requested capital by using our American Rescue Plan Act funds. So some of the capital that was initially requested early in the budget process was actually funded through another fund. In that same vein, many of our large capital projects are in separate special project funds, things like the ten million dollar treatment or rehabilitation of our water treatment plant, all the work on our wastewater treatment plant, the city lake project, our stormwater assessment. All of those are large consequential, significant projects that are gonna be really good for the community that are not necessarily in the operating budget that's presented before you. So while what you have before you is pretty consistent with prior years in terms of expenses, there is still a lot going on, a lot of progress being made. This is a revaluation year. Richmond County, as, as many of you all know, if you own property in Richmond County, you've received a notice of revaluation. In a revaluation year, units of local government are required to post what's called a revenue-neutral tax rate, which is a tax rate that would bring in the same amount of revenue as the previous year using the new currently assessed or being assessed values. So just a brief history on our tax rate. Our tax rate was sixty-six cents for many years. It was increased to seventy-six cents following the sales tax change, sales tax distribution method change from Richmond County. That was in twenty twenty, right at the beginning of COVID. Based on the new values, which are not finalized, but they are the numbers that we have, a revenue-neutral rate would be sixty-four point eight cents. That would get us the same amount of revenue that we have projected in the current twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. In the proposed budget, based on conversations in the work session, the budget is balanced using a sixty-six cent tax rate, sixty cents, sixty-six cents per hundred dollars evaluation. There is currently no increase to garbage or utility fees included in the budget, and we are having additional meetings on May twenty-first and May twenty-eighth to finalize the budget, taxes, fees, and utility rates. I'd like to extend a special thanks to Edna Miles and Benita Mullis, who helped me a great deal putting this budget together, and all the other department heads for being responsible with the city's tax dollars. And finally, I'd like to thank city council for supporting our efforts to move the city forward. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I will now close the public hearing.
And my comment is that until we get a final number from the county, which I think is probably going to change somewhat, because I think a fair number of individuals have gotten reductions in their original evaluations, which is gonna reduce the amount of revenue we'll actually get, will cause this revenue-neutral rate to increase. So is that something we can make a firm decision on in the next meeting on the twenty-first? Or, you know?
I think that depends on whether or not the valuations are finalized, and I don't think they will be. Based on my understanding, I think the, the, I can't remember the proper term, but there's an appeals board that's set up. I'm not sure what the timeline for that process is, but I don't think it'll be next week. So that's all the information. I, I can get you more information on that by calling the county tax office.
I'd be curious to know what, where they are at this point. Obviously, their numbers, I would think they would be adjusting their numbers through this process, wouldn't you?
They would be adjusting their numbers based on, based on the appeals that are submitted to, to the.
Right.
What is, is, what is the name of that board? The Board of Equalization and Review is the technical name. Thank you, D.C.
Well, I know they're meeting, so, and I know they're doing adjustments. Because I got some adjusted. So I was just wondering if this final tax rate would be something that we ought to implement when we're as close as possible to the budget time to adopt.
I think that's the most prudent thing to do. It's just without knowing exactly when it is.
I don't wanna underestimate what we need to do and find ourselves in a bind, because we, that's happened to us.
Don't want to overestimate it either.
Based on mine, I don't think they're going up for many people. I think they took them as high as they could go.
Don't want to overestimate it.
Yeah, the, the budget message and the public hearing tonight are based on the best information that we have available, and in an effort of transparency and, you know, expediency, keeping things moving forward, it has been presented, and it is not being presented with the expectation of adoption. I mean, we do have drafted ordinances and things, so we will be ready when that time comes. But we do have those additional meetings so that we can continue talking about this, and, you know, we're just at the whim of the county and their process at this time.
Okay. Okay, any other comments about budget? City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I would say that, just remind everyone that all of our events have started back up. Food Truck Friday, yoga in the park, boxcar concert series, among some other things going on in the community. So please come out and enjoy those things that we have kind of putting on for the community. The downtown streetscape plan is still underway, and I want to thank everyone who came out to our, our initial public, our second public input session, and we will have a draft plan available for your consideration soon. We're making headway on the disc golf course that's been presented. Mayor Glenn and I walked the area that we've cleared out there, and there is, that's still an ongoing project, so we haven't forgotten about it. The short session of the legislature began April twenty-fourth, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Ben Moss, who's our house rep, who called me at the beginning of the session and asked me, "Is there anything you need?" And we discussed some items, and it's not, it's always refreshing when they call you, and so I just wanted to personally thank him for that. And as the board knows, and I'm not sure how many folks in the public know, this will be one of my last meetings as the Hamlet city manager. I've put in my notice, and I'm currently working that notice. I want to thank the staff for making our vision for the community possible. I want to thank the council for supporting us every step of the way, and I want to thank the public for being engaged and just being a very special community. There's, there's a lot to offer here in Hamlet, and, and I'm still excited about the future for Hamlet, even though I'm making a move myself, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin, have you got any comments?
Well, I'll just comment on what the city manager just had to say about his leaving. I wish him well. He's done an excellent job for the city of Hamlet, and I hope the next person that comes in will, will do it equally as well. The official opening of the twenty-four season for the post forty-nine American Legion baseball will be May thirty-first. This is the last time we'll be meeting before that. And I appreciate all the support I've been able to receive from the mayor and council and the city manager and all the things that we've done at the park to improve everything. Everything's working real good, and I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stewart?
I continue to thank the citizens for coming out to the meetings. As, as the citizens, when you want things done, come to the meetings. We do our very best to get them done, so thank you for continuing to come and, and express your concerns in the city. I have a community walk that I started last year, and I continue to invite everyone out. Every Thursday at six o'clock, we start right across the street from city hall. It's about a one-point-five to two-mile walk. It's called Mo Miles. So I, I express and employ everybody else to come out and hang out with us every Thursday. The next one will be May thirtieth, so please come out. It's health, wealth, and just getting along in the community. Thank you so much. May thirtieth is the next one.
Mr. Sellers?
Bananas and water.
Ms. Covington?
Well, I think you pretty much covered everything. I'm really excited about the American Legion season opening up, but I have to say that I'm not excited about Matt's departure. Matt Christian came to the city of Hamlet during probably one of our darkest financial hours in, in many years, and that's when the county took away all of our sales tax money. And as a result of that, we had to scramble to see not only how we were gonna make it that year, but how we were gonna make it every year after that, because we lost almost seven-hundred thousand dollars of revenue that was ours. And Matt hit the ground with a passion of somebody that had lived here fifteen years, and he saw us through that, and he pushed and pushed and pushed and pushed, and asked for answers and got answers and asked more questions. And I dare say that if he hadn't been at the helm during that time, we would be a whole lot worse off right now than we are. We haven't gotten the money back. We haven't gotten any money at all this year, but it's because he, he leads the way to, to do what's right and regarding the cross-tie situation and the sales tax situation. And I appreciate the representation that he has given Hamlet with the county during his tenure. Matt, I want to thank you and wish you the absolute best on this new adventure.
Thank you very much.
I would like to say congratulations to Dobbin's Heights on their fortieth anniversary of the town, May eighth. It was a nice celebration they had there. And they're also announced that they got a large grant to build some apartments, so that's gonna be great for their community.
Two and a half million dollars, wasn't it?
Uh huh, yeah. And, yeah, I'm gonna miss you, Matt. You've done a lot here, so you're gonna have some big shoes to fill when you're not here, for sure.
Matt, did Michelle say anything else about the Fourth of July events?
Oh, yeah. I apologize for not mentioning that. Let me make sure I don't misspeak now. When did we say it was? now. When did we say it was gonna be? We made a decision.
The 5th?
The 5th. It will be on the 5th. Thank you. Thank you for reminding us.
Has she secured a vendor for the fireworks?
I don't know.
I think they were good, as long as it wasn't the 4th.
Yeah, I'll confirm that and report back via, via email.
Okay.
But we had, they had indicated that other dates other than the 4th were available, so.
And let's go ahead and look for 4th, July 4th, 2025. Go ahead and book them.
Need a motion to go in a closed session?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.